Before we commence the meeting, I'd like to draw your attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me and the smaller screen facing the public gallery. Could you all please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? Members of the public, I'm sure we're going to have a nice orderly meeting, nobody's going to get too rowdy, but please resist the temptation, thank you. Before I move on to the main items of business, I'd like to introduce the planning team in front of me. On my left is Barry Devlin, our planning lawyer. Next to him is Marie Clark, planning team leader, Kate Edwards, planning officer, and Patrick Arthur, deputy development manager. The first item of business this evening is the minutes of our last meeting, they've been on the table for thirty minutes before you, are you happy that I sign them as a true record?
Very.
Thank you very much. Emma, any apologies for absence?
No apologies, Chair.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None prior to the meeting.
Any questions from members of the public or from members?
None received.
Jolly good. Any relevant updates, this is addressed to Marie or Patrick, any relevant updates to government guidance?
No updates.
Thank you. Would you like to present the performance against government target figures, please?
Thank you, Chair. Performance in relation to both speed and quality is well above the targets for both majors and non-majors.
Thank you very much, excellent news. So we move on to the main items for discussion this evening, applications for planning permission, and just to note that should we decide that a site visit would be useful or necessary, these will be held on Monday the 8th of April 2019 at a time to be agreed. So the first application we're looking at this evening is item A1, Planning Reference WA 2018 1887, Keyes Cottage Holloway Hill Godling GU71RZ, and the proposal is erection of a dwelling and associated works, demolition of existing dwelling upon completion, and I'll invite Kate to introduce the application to us, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So we can see a site plan here with the site outlined in red, and you can see around the sides of the site here contour lines which indicate that the existing building is within a significant depression in the land with it having previously been a quarry. Holloway Hill is here and Brema Close is here, and the site is currently surrounded by well-established trees to both the boundary onto Holloway Hill and Brema Close. And here we can see an elevation looking at the existing property within the application site itself, which is, as I said...
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to turn off the two lights?
That's better, isn't it? Great. As you can see, it's an existing single-storey plus a tall roof space to the existing property. This elevation which we can see in the image is not particularly visible from Holloway Hill itself being at a lower level and with the established tree boundaries. And this is now looking at the application site from one Brema Close, which is the property immediately to the west, and as you can see it's at a significantly lower level. And this is an elevation of the street scene onto Brema Close, the application site is behind this established tree line here, it's proposed that these trees would be retained but that pre-existing access onto Brema Close which has become overgrown would be opened up again as part of the proposal. And as you will have seen from the report, there is a large amount of history associated with the site, so I'll just very quickly talk you through the key applications in relation to that just by way of background. The images here are from a 2015 application for a single dwelling on the site which was refused, but the only reason for refusal was in relation to the character of the proposed building being incongruous. And as you can see from the site plan down here and this elevation which would be that key west elevation facing towards one Brema Close, that there would be a mansard roof to the top of the building with a flat roof above which was considered to be out of character. But in relation to that application, all the other matters were found to be acceptable. And another application here in relation to the history, this is an application where consent was granted for a single dwelling on the site, but that consent has now lapsed. So we can see the height of the proposed building here with the elevation facing in towards the site to the north, so neither towards Holloway Hill or Brema Close. And here we can see the site plan which was actually for a wider site with a number of other houses proposed with the plot that was consented and the consent has now lapsed here. And here we can see the outline of a number of, with one Brema Close here, and a number of buildings here, here, and here, which was a consent, sorry, not a consent, which was an application for twelve dwellings within the site which the council resolved to grant consent for but then refused because the section 106 wasn't completed, so refused solely in relation to not providing planning obligations. And now moving to the proposed plans, we can see here the outline of the proposed house which would have dormer windows, a sloping roof with dormer windows within it. And in this site plan we can see here clearly outlined in black the proposed house with terraces to the elevation onto Brema Close and to the side, and a garage here, access via a large driveway parking area here. And looking now at the proposed elevations, we can see here the north elevation which is again facing in towards the site where there would be dormers within the roof space and then three stories below. And we can see in this section here how recessed the proposed building would be in relation to the surrounding properties. And to confirm the key matters for consideration in relation to the planning history and the principle of the development, the design of the proposed building and the impact on visual amenity, the impact on neighbours and their residential amenity, the impact on trees and the impact on biodiversity, thank you. And to confirm, one update sheet has been prepared, and that's just to add an additional informative onto the decision notice in relation to SIL, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. This application is subject to public speaking, and I would invite Neil Marson to speak on behalf of the objectors, please. Good evening, Mr. Marson, I understand the procedure's been explained to you and you have four minutes from when you start speaking, thank you.
Thank you. I speak for a large group of concerned locals. We've no issue with a replacement house being built of the size and style approved in 2014 which was traditional and three stories, but the size and proximity to the western boundary of this proposal is inappropriate. We're also in opposition to the 2011 and 12 proposals to build a street of houses on the site. These received Hughes's opposition and development was never approved although the applicant repeatedly states that it was, which we'd like correcting. We oppose the scale of this proposal which is the same as rejected in 2017 but with an amended roof design. This is a much higher five-storey house than was previously approved and has a significant impact on visual amenity. To claim this five-storey house is as high as a neighbouring two-storey house ignores the fact that it starts from a much lower ground level and is a much more imposing thirteen metre tall building as a result, at odds with the area's character. The nature of the construction is ambitious and risky with excessive excavation of the steep bank six metres deep along most of the site's western edge, only two metres from the wall of one Brema Close. This risk subsidence is, and is completely unnecessary. Six metres is the eaves height of a two-storey house and digging to that depth right along the boundary, although below ground can hardly be described as not a planning issue. Multi-storey basements affecting neighbours are a planning issue. The excavation isn't mentioned in the officer's report which is a serious omission as are the inaccuracies in the plans such as the incorrect outline of eighteen Brema Close and the omission of one Brema Close from the plan and the north and south elevations. The reason given for the excavation is thermal efficiency, but the same result could be achieved by moving the house five to ten metres further away from the boundary and building up the ground instead of digging. This also avoids the risk of unearthing the Japanese knotweed that was present. Given there is no permission for further development, there is no reason not to do that and we would have no objection with this approach taken. There are no details on the garden house that appears on the plan. In conclusion, there is risk of harm to the neighbours that hasn't been properly considered and there are good grounds to refuse the application on the basis of both size and position. However, should it be approved, we need additional conditions to protect the neighbours which were included in 2014 but are mysteriously missing now. In particular, prior to work starting, one, a slope stability report and structural spec for the retaining wall is completed by an independent qualified person and approved by planning to ensure structural integrity of the proposal and long-term stability of the slope. Two, a piling method statement submitted and approved by planning and Thames Water and no impact piling used due to proximity to neighbours. Three, that the hedges and trees that form the western boundary are retained and maintained for the privacy and security of the neighbours whose rear garden would otherwise be visible from Holloway Hill. Four, the hedge on the southern boundary is retained or replaced to protect the character of the street and prevent overlooking. Five, a plan of the finished ground levels and finishes is agreed and enforced. Six, Thames Water to agree the drainage design for the sewer and continue to adopt and maintain it. Seven, no further windows or openings allowed in the western elevation. Eight, construction hours limited to eight to six weekdays and eight to one on Saturdays with no work on Sundays or bank holidays. Nine, limitations on the size, position, materials, openings and intended use are placed on the garden house or it is deemed subject to separate planning approval. And ten, that this is a single dwelling and that there is no approval for further development on the site. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And now invite Adrian Muir, the applicant, to speak in support of the application.
This is probably the longest-running planning proposal in Waverley. I have been prepared to spend the time and effort on this because I want to get it right and produce the best house I can. After all, this is my forever home, which I intend to leave in a box. My perspective is totally different to that of a developer. I'm not looking for short-term profit, long-term stability and environmental impact are much more important. To that end, I went on a passive house design course and created many designs in order to understand their overall performance. The application before you is not ideal, it is a compromise, it is less efficient and makes less of an environmental contribution than the rejected application, it is taller and less easy to maintain than I would like. However, it meets my key objective of a sustainable, comfortable home. This design enables me to create a home that is flexible, energy efficient and as far as possible future-proof. Every aspect of the design has been carefully considered. The underground space reduces the impact of changes in outside air temperature. The internal buttress will significantly increase the support to the boundary and adjacent property. I've tried to take into account objections received over the years in my quest to deliver the best possible solution for everyone. Having the main garden to the south of the property increases the privacy of my garden and that of number one. In addition, noise transfer will be reduced as the houses will form a barrier between the respective gardens. I have rotated and moved the house further away from the boundary to address concerns of overlooking and increase the visible separation between the properties. A suggestion has been made that the use of the rest of the plot needs to be decided before the application can be approved. I respectfully suggest that such a question is beyond the scope of this evening, given this application is in effect a modification to the application for a replacement dwelling granted permission in 2014. However, I understand it is a legitimate concern, so can I place on record my willingness to sit down with either you as a group or individually to discuss options for the rest of the site? There may be, there are many possibilities, and as long as we arrive at a quality development which I can be proud of, I am flexible as to the nature and composition. I would welcome a broader conversation with all parties involved. My focus today is on this application as I desperately need a new home and wish to use the summer to start works. This application is not perfect but is immeasurably better than the property it replaces and a marked improvement to that that was agreed in 2014. My new home strengthens the landscape rather than ignoring it and is in keeping with the surrounding properties. It is technically well ahead of the vast majority of new builds as well as the existing housing stock. It is highly efficient both in terms of energy usage and the space it occupies. As a result, I fervently believe this application warrants your full support and is an example of what we should be building in urban locations. Many thanks.
Thank you. councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application has come to the full committee as a result of my request. I am one of the two ward councillors for Godling Holloway, Tom Martin is the other ward councillor. This site, Mr. Chairman, is a pretty unique site, I don't think there is another one quite like it in Godling and indeed I don't think there's another one quite like this site in the whole of Waverley. It is of course a disused or a worked-out small quarry and we have a rather unusual site. I know the applicant and I know how sincere Mr. Muir has been in his quest to build a house here, and I wouldn't in any way question what he's trying to do although it seems to have taken a very long time with all sorts of applications which have been partly approved, not approved and so on and so forth, and it's a pity that it's taking so long. And I also understand the objections of many of the neighbours and the residents, particularly those in Brema Close. So I find this is a very difficult planning application to properly consider, trying from my point of view to be fair to all sides but also of course to observe planning law and ensuring that we get this right. Now, Mr. Chairman, two things strike me. First of all, I find that the particular house that we have here is a very curious house to be considering in isolation. It's clearly designed to be something which will continue, other houses to be put alongside, and indeed in communications from Mr. Muir and what he said tonight, he would like to build more. So we're always asked to look at a planning application in isolation, and looking at this planning application in isolation, I find it to be a very strange house in a reasonably substantial plot and therefore it doesn't seem to me to be quite right. It seems to be the beginning of something more. Now, I would much prefer that we saw the something more that goes along with this, are there to be another three houses, four houses, are there to be twelve houses or whatever? And in the past, ten or twelve houses were approved by this committee although it was subsequently refused because the section 106 was not entered into. So in considering an application of this sort which seems to me to be very peculiar as a single house, I would much prefer to see what is intended for the entire plot before giving any planning permission because what might be right in one corner may not be right as it is extended around into other parts of the plot. So that's a concern. The second concern I have is, yes, there was approval given for a house four years ago and that approval now is timed out although of course it is a material consideration. The application that we have before us is for a substantially taller house, it's a very different house, and I think it is very different. How much taller does it have to become before we all say, no, that's too much? In my judgment, maybe it has got to a point where it's too much today. Now, given these complexities, it seems to me that this committee would benefit from actually seeing the site and considering it in more detail, and my proposition is to defer this proposal tonight, to have a site visit and to bring this back to the next planning meeting which I think will be on the 10th of April. I think a short deferral with the opportunity for members of the committee to go and eyeball the site and see for themselves the potential impact and how close it is to the boundary and satisfy themselves that this is either right and proper for permission to be approved or no, we would prefer not to approve, and I would formally propose now that we defer this until our next meeting.
Thank you. So that's a formal proposal. Do you have a second, councillor Reynolds? Thank you. Would you like to speak to the, or you already have really spoken to...
I think, Mr. Chairman, I've already spoken to...
The proposal is that we have a site meeting on the date which we spoke about earlier. Can I have all those in favour? Or would anybody like to speak to the proposal first or should we just vote? We'll just vote. All those who would like to go on a site visit.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen...
And against?
Abstention.
Abstention?
Chairman, the only reason is that I can't make Monday.
Okay. I don't even know that I can. It's the 8th of April, it's not next Monday.
I can't do Mondays, that's the problem.
You're such a busy lady, councillor James. Okay, so in that case, we will defer consideration of this application pending a site meeting on the Monday the 8th of April at a time to be agreed. Thank you. Yes, councillor Bolton?
Thank you. I was going to raise a question about the objector who had referred to a number of extra conditions and ask officers for their advice about that. If I can't raise it now, I would raise it later, but perhaps officers could consider that in the time between now and later.
I think that's a very valid proposal, councillor Bolton, and if the objector would be good enough to let the officers have a written copy, I'm sure that a lot of the conditions are already covered because our officers are so clever. Councillor Follows.
In a similar vein, if also officers might want to comment on some of the points raised by the objector about subsidence, excavation issues, Japanese knotweed and some of those other points, just because I was going to ask them but agree entirely with the deferral, so if we could have that in advance as well, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you. I made a note here about this existing access to Brema Close, I can't see how it could be vehicular but you said there is an existing access, so a bit of clarification on that would be good. But yeah, other than that, it's deferred until after. Councillor Holden.
Thank you, I was going to add also that the comments made about the sewer going almost under the basement should be looked at as well on the site visit.
Thank you. I think if Mr. Marston could let the officers have a copy of his words, then all these items can be looked into, so. Right, thank you. I don't know if you in the public gallery wish to stay for the rest of the meeting or whether you want to get up and leave, but you're quite welcome to stay, we appreciate So members, we move on to the next application which is item B1, Reference WA 2018 1727, the car park at Aaron's Hill Godling, and the proposal is an application under Regulation 3 for erection of affordable dwellings, and Marie is going to introduce this application.
Thank you, Chair. This slide shows the location plan, as you can see it's a former garage site, and here are pictures showing the surrounding area and the site. The surrounding area is characterised by a mixture of terrace-detached and semi-detached These are the proposed elevations, so it's proposed to erect four flats but they'd be in the style of masonette, so essentially they'd look like a pair of semi-detached This shows the proposed floor plans, so you've got flats one and two at ground floor level, and then flats three and four at first floor. This is the proposed site plan. So flats one and two would have gardens immediately to the rear and flats three and four would have gardens beyond. And then you'd have vehicular access at the front with four parking spaces, so that's one for each flat. And then there's an existing public footpath which runs down the middle of the site and it's proposed to amend this so that it goes along the western edge. These are illustrations of what the buildings would look like, you've got a mixture of brick, timber effect cladding and clay tiles. Matters for consideration are the principle of development, design and impact on visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, impact on trees, parking and highway safety, public right of way and affordable housing. And there have been two updates circulated, one is an additional informative relating to SIL and the other is in relation to an additional neighbour representation which has been received, objecting to the amendment to the right of way, but the amended plans have now addressed this objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Did you clear up the floor area thing that we discussed at briefing where it appeared that the first floor, although larger, was smaller?
Yes, if I can just show you the floor plans. So at ground floor, flats one and two comply with the space standards, but then at first floor, one of the flats, I think it's three, is one square metre smaller than the space standards and the other flat is two square metres smaller, and we think it's actually because of these large cupboards. So the bedroom sizes, they comply, but overall the floor space is just very slightly under, so it's just because of these cupboards, which arguably is better because if you have a bigger landing that doesn't really benefit anybody, but having a bigger cupboard is actually better.
Thank you. Councillor Follows.
Thank you. Also, we'll comment on that particular issue in a second, but first I wanted to say thank you to the officers involved in this one because they engaged with myself and councillor Bolton very early on so that we could discuss most of these issues and get them all sorted out. The main one that came up first of all was that public right of way which is proposed to be amended to go round the site, which has dealt with some of the other principal objections. The other issues were raised by a few nearby residents and those residents have been written to and spoken to to deal with their concerns, so I think that was all very well done as well. In regards to the cupboard space, I think that is probably a debate for the group to have, but whether you'd prefer the extra cupboard space or the extra space in the room, my understanding from talking to officers on the subject earlier was that if need be the design could be amended to take it out or to keep it in, it's really a matter for what we would prefer is my understanding. I'm sure officers will confirm or deny that if that's the case, but that's what I've been informed. So I assume we'll have that discussion but in all other fashion, I think it's been very well handled and thank you for addressing all of our concerns and those of our residents, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm still a bit puzzled by the floor area because all the room sizes are identical to downstairs and I think the bedroom in flat three is slightly larger because it hasn't got the wardrobe taken out of it, but never mind, it looks like it's a good standard of accommodation by any means. Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think this is a great scheme actually, it looks quite, well it's well-designed, it looks attractive, it provides affordable housing which is exactly what we want. When I built my house six years ago, I purposely put in some big cupboards because actually they're invaluable because these aren't going to have any loft space, I suppose the top ones may have, but loft space these days is very limited and you don't get much height anymore, so I think it's going to be much more useful to have cupboards than a slightly bigger bedroom or a slightly bigger landing, so I have no problem with it, I think it's... I think they're well-designed, I'm glad the access has been sorted out for the footpath, so I commend waverly for this plan and let's get on and build them.
Thank you. Councillor Tommaso?
I agree. Ultimately, stuff has to go somewhere and if it's not in a cupboard, it just ends up clustering the floor space and you end up with reduced floor space anyway, so I think this is a good scheme. I assume that there is a greater need for one-bedroom affordable housing than, essentially for one-bedroom rather than two-bedroom, and I couldn't see that in the report, but I'm sure that there is a greater need for that, so yeah, I'm all for it and I would stick with the layout as it is, cupboards are useful.
Thank you. Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Seems to be a characteristic of the WBC designs these days that they are well-designed and give generous proportions in living areas, bathrooms and bedrooms. And I am very pleased that the officers are now including the tables, like table 1 and 2 on page 43, because although we don't have the nationally determined space standards included in our local plan, to me, the very fact that they exist, they are national, therefore what their recommendations are should be taken into account, regardless of whether they're in the local plan or not at this moment in time. Now, the other thing is that I don't quite understand why in table 1, under total floor space, we get the sort of bedroom, sorry, the overall floor space and then the storage is determined, but on the right-hand side, the recommended floor space does not include recommended storage, which if you look at the tables in the design standards are included. And for example, for flat 3, it would be 50 square metres for the recommended floor space plus one and a half metres for storage. Now, I concur that this generous storage space is absolutely marvellous, going to be a very practical resolution, but going forward, I do, I'm troubled by the concept that having got standards defined, and they are minimum standards for decent living, minimum standards for decent living, we're prepared to go and say, oh, well, it's just failed by one square metre, it's just failed by two square metres. If I'm at these planning meetings in future, then I will certainly vote against anything that's outside of those planning standards, because I think they're absolutely fundamental, bearing in mind that they are minimum and it's all been put together trying to ensure that there are decent living spaces for people. And the only other thing I can comment on is the fact that we have double beds shown in these flats, quite rightly so, there's spaces there, so invariably that's going to be two cars or should be two cars, whether initially or for future occupants, and all we've got defined are four parking spaces. So I think that's a real limitation to decent practical living. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Byer?
I must admit, I'm intrigued about this problem about storage space and whether it, as far as I'm concerned, it's part of the footprint of the building and therefore it should be counted. You either have a wardrobe or a big cupboard there or you put a wall around it. In this case, we've put a wall around it, a stud wall or whatever, and it's part of the flat and provided there. In the same way, do we have the same situation with a fitted wardrobe? And I can't quite work out whether there are fitted wardrobes there. In a lot of our flats, they have them, so that doesn't count then as part of the spate of the building? Crazy. They're doing a very practical way of dealing with this situation. I would count that as part of the floor space of the building, of the flat, and therefore it's acceptable and probably within the space standards.
I must say, from a personal point of view, I can't say that it matters much, that they match up with the ground floor flats, they've got the same room sizes as the ground floor flats, so downstairs, you've got a porch instead of a walk-in wardrobe or you've got an extra bit of hall, but you know, if the living size, the rooms' sizes are the same, I can't see why we're spending so much time discussing it really, but never mind. Councillor Wheatley?
Thank you, Chairman. When, for instance, my husband was buying a flat in Callidore in Mallorca, you get a space and you are told what the measurements are and how that is broken up was then entirely up to the developer and the buyer. So you've got the space there. To my mind, it's a no-brainer, that goes, doesn't come into it at all. I think it's a nice design. I like the way it's staggered a bit, it makes it interesting. I understand the trouble with parking, but if it's almost a starter home, whatever, I think one car is probably what people might manage. Is there, will there be room for bicycles or anything like that? That might be needed.
In the cupboard.
In the cupboard, that's right.
There are cycle stores in all four gardens. Councillor follows, you wish to come back?
Yeah, very quickly, my own flat probably doesn't have a greater floor plan than that and if there wasn't a cupboard in there, I would have put one in there. So I think the whole argument, as Maurice Bymer said completely, that is, I completely agree with that, they are fine for that sort of regard, somebody would put a cupboard in anyway. The idea that everybody would naturally have two cars, I don't think that completely holds water so much anymore, particularly when we're talking about somewhere that's got a good proximity to the train station, to some local bus services, I won't say that they're great, hopefully they could be better at some point, but the access to the town centre and the railway station, storage for bicycles, access to the public right of way, I personally don't see that there will be a guaranteed two-car situation there and I am personally perfectly happy with the designs as they are.
Just a little add-on to that. I actually, I spent the first nine years of my life four, five doors down from this and in those days, there were two cars in the whole street and only one of them went, but that's beside the point. Councillor Reynolds?
Well, just a quick one on the parking, because it's in front of us and it shows only four spaces, but one of them seems to be a disabled space and I don't know if that's going to be reserved as a disabled space, in which case there's surely only three parking spaces.
I think what it's showing is that the upper one with the disabled sign on, it has got the extra additional room to the side to make that a disabled space.
If necessary.
If necessary, yes. Councillor Holder?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm slightly puzzled by the illustrations on page 34, which indicate that the roof heights are the same for both buildings and yet the picture on page 36 indicates that roof heights are different, so I am slightly puzzled by that.
It's an artistic impression by a not very good artist, I think. If you look at the side elevations on pages 34 and 35, it does show that the ridges are the same. Members, shall we move to the recommendation? Right, jolly good. So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 16 and informatives 1 to 6 in the agenda report and additional information 7 on the update sheet, permission be granted. All those in favour?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Jolly good. So that's approved and that'll be another for social housing for our residents, which can't be bad. So we move on to the next item, item B1, which is reference WA 2018 1727. No, that's the one we've just spoken about. So I've just read out the wrong recommendation.
No, you did, you did the right one.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it's B2.
It's the same one. Sorry, the recommendation which you just voted on should have read that, subject to conditions 1 to 17 and informatives 1 to 8 in the agenda report and additional information, informative 9 on the update sheet, permission be granted. Once again, all those in favour, please, agree. Thank you. So we move on to item B2, reference WA 2018 2163, 29 Marshall Road, Godleming, GU7 380 and the proposal is the erection of a single-storey rear extension and Kate will introduce.
Excuse me there, thank you, Chair. There are actually two applications before you in relation to this site. One is an application for planning permission and the other is a concurrent application for listed building consent. Here we can see the site itself, which is an existing single-family dwelling house. Marshall Road runs here to the north and Lower Manor Road runs down here, so it's a corner plot. And the adjacent building within the pair of semi-detached buildings is also under the same listing. So here we can see the proposed floor plans with the original building fairly rectangular and regular in size here, the existing two-storey side extension in this area here and the proposed extension in this area here, which would have a single-storey only. And here we can see the proposed roof plan, again with the existing two-storey extension here and the tiled hipped roof that's proposed above the extension before us this evening. And looking now at the proposed elevations, we can see here again, excuse me if I just find the cursor, we can see the proposed extension here. And the determining issues in relation to this application are key in relation to the impact on the listed building, but also in relation to the impact on residential amenity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds?
Well, just very quickly, this is in my ward, it's a very pretty cottage, they've done a good job with the extension. Looks on the original, the first map you showed, that a neighbour's done something very similar. I have no objection.
Councillor Martin?
I'm equally comfortable with this. Have we not already agreed this a couple of minutes ago by mistake?
No, what we agreed was the first application for Key Cottage. So although you voted for a site meeting, you then went ahead and approved it. Right, does anybody else wish to comment? Councillor Lee?
Just a question, Mr Chairman. There was one letter in support that did raise an issue felt by the person about loss of privacy due to the proposed flank kitchen window and also proposed the provision of a wall to prevent this. Can you just sort of give me a little bit of background on that, whether anything has been done there? I must say, I didn't quite understand the loss of privacy aspect, I didn't sort of see the angles as providing those problems.
Sure. If I just, and apologies, that was a present, there are two presentations in here for the same site, so that previous one didn't have the images here. So here's a view of the rear of the existing dwelling with the boundary line visible along here. You can just see that the neighbouring semi-detached dwelling house has also had a rear extension which is in a very similar mirrored position to that proposed. They have an existing side-facing, I believe it's a glazed door in that elevation and a window is proposed in the, to, I believe, serve the kitchen in the facing elevation of the proposed extension. The representation did, as you've said, suggest that a taller boundary wall is built there. However, the officers feel that, given the separation distances and given the fact that we've allowed the neighbour in the past to have clear glazing to a flank window with a similar separation distance, we feel that it's a satisfactory situation and privacy would be maintained sufficiently.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Chairman. Question for officers, is the neighbouring semi-detached listed and presumably it's got a planning history which we approved?
Yes, that's correct. It's listed and it's in fact under the same listing as the application site.
Councillor Holder?
Thank you, Chairman. In previous applications that I looked at in listed building, it does appear that the conditions are that all the woods, all the windows should be made of wood and the eaves made of wood, not plastic, and I noticed that the condition is that the gutters should be made of cast iron to conform with the original building. But I don't see any condition about the windows, I wonder if that can be included.
Condition 2 does include the standard condition for details of all windows and doors and in my experience, if I was to submit an application for PVC windows on a listed building, it wouldn't be approved, so all details of windows and doors have to be approved under condition 2 and they would go to the listed building officer. Would you like to confirm that, officers, please?
That's correct.
So, members, are you happy to move to the recommendation? And make sure I get the right one this time. It is that, subject to conditions 1 to 2 and informative 1, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
And I don't know if you want to discuss the listed building or go straight to the recommendation, which is that, subject to conditions 1 to 3 and informative 1, listed building be granted.
Yeah.
Thank you. There are no items to consider under exempt session, so thank you for your attendance and a safe journey home. Good night.